For August 31st is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the provisions of an act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency that was signed by Governor Baker on June 26th, 20, I'm sorry, on June 16th, 2021. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings that it adopted during the COVID-19 pandemic until April 1st, 2022. This virtual hearing is being livestreamed and recorded via WebEx. This as, um, in order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page at the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. As with our in-person meetings, comment and support will be followed by comments in opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting will be limited by the chair as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by the project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise your hand icon in the application via the WebEx platform. To raise your hand, click the participant information icon. From there, find your name, and on the lower right-hand side, you should see a hand raising icon. Click that icon and your hand will be virtually raised. Click it again and your hand should go down. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star three to raise your hand. Again, if you are connected by telephone, please press star three to raise your hand. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then can provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the irrelevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Please additionally lower your hand once you've, uh, registered, um, your comments. Before we proceed any further, let me take a roll for call. Mr. Fortune?
I'm here, Madam Chair.
Good morning, welcome back.
Thank you.
Ms. Dong?
Present.
Ms. Bonado?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Kandell?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Ms. Walsh? Um, Mr. Hampton from the BPDA?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm here.
Excellent, um, so for all attendees today, we have a five-member board.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but Kerry is on, Kerry Logue's on.
Oh, good, good to know that. Kerry, can you, um, uh, good morning. Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning. So this is a six-member board sitting today, so for all applicants, um, you need five members in support of your proposal for the, for the motion to carry. Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first order of business is the approval of the hearing minutes of June 29th, 2021. We need a motion.
So moved, Jean?
Second.
Second.
Secretary.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
On the first case for extension, calling case BOA 930621.
Sorry, Mr. Fortune, can you hold on a minute? May I ask that any applicant who's having an issue, because I see a couple of comments sent to me privately, to please put your comments publicly, uh, because, uh, I, uh, am relying on, and we are all relying on the technical expertise of Madam Ambassador and her team. Okay, so thank you, sorry, Mr. Fortune.
Quite all right, Madam Chair, thank you. Calling the first case for extension, calling BOA 930621, One Ludlow Street. Madam Chair, this did expire on June 14th of 2021. If we do grant it, it would be their first extension. Name and address for the record, please.
Um, Eric Zacherson, One Ludlow Street, Charlestown. Madam Chairman, members of the board, uh, we put the project on hold during, uh, COVID last year, and we uploaded all the information in April of this year, and then, um, we didn't realize that the reviewer we had sent it to was no longer with the city, so we didn't find out until May that it wasn't being reviewed. So we have everything, we're ready to, to build as soon as we can get a building permit, but we would need some time.
Okay, may I have a motion?
So moved, Jean?
Make a motion for one-year extension.
Is there a second?
I can turn off.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That would be for today's date.
That is from today's date, yes. Um, a motion carries, you're all set, um, you're all set.
Thank you.
Calling a next case for extension, calling BOA 948242666 Metropolitan Avenue. Madam Chair, this is, this did expire on August 30th of 2021. If we do grant it, it'd be their first extension. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney John Pulgeni on behalf of the applicant, Tony Ferrara, um, with the business address of 10 Flugs Road in Braintree. This is, extension is due to COVID, the house is a, uh, is an existing six family that we were going to.
Mr. Pulgeni? Mr. Pulgeni, please hold on. May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion for a one-year extension.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling next two cases for board final arbiter, calling BOA 11564701121 Dorchester Avenue, and companion case BOA 115647531 Savin Hill Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is George Maransy, I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway, South Austin. Madam Chair, members, uh, on April 27th of this year, the board approved these two applications for zoning relief for, uh, a 24-unit project on Dorchester Avenue at the corner of Savin Hill in Dorchester. The approved plans depicted 19 garage parking spaces. Uh, since that time, uh, because of, uh, geotechnical issues that just surfaced, there has to be a modification to the parking plan which would result in the 19 spaces being reduced to 15 spaces. But someone who is better equipped to explain the geotechnical reasons for this request is Nick Ruggieri from Rhodey Architects. Nick is here today, and I'd like Nick just to briefly testify upon those technical issues.
Thank you, George. Uh, yes, Nick Ruggieri from Rhodey Architects here. Um, like George mentioned, uh, the essentially, um, subsequent test borings were, were done onsite, which revealed a higher-than-expected seasonal water table. Um, that required us to make modifications to the depth of the basement we were posing. Um, the basement got shallower to accommodate a high-water table, and that is what triggered the reduction in parking.
Uh, but, but you will be using the, the, um, this, this system to be able to accommodate the 15 spaces, right?
The 15 spaces can be accommodated with a more standard parking setup in a basement accessed with a ramp versus a, a stacker system, so we are proposing a much simpler, um, below-grade parking setup, uh, that does not have to go as deep.
Thank you. Uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Kandell, have you had a chance to look at the plans? I, I think actually, may I have a motion, please, for approval?
No.
Is there a second?
Second, Secretary.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd call the 930 cases for deferrals and withdrawals, if you could give me the address first, please? These are the deferrals and withdrawals. I'm sorry.
Nine Russell Street, please?
For the record, calling BOA 11736549Russell Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago in Tuscana with the business, business address of 11 Beacon Street. We are seeking, uh, a deferral, hopefully a relatively quick turnaround. Uh, there were some last-minute comments that came into the mayor's office and the councilor's office, uh, and they would like us to have a third of butter meeting for some clarifications. They have a tentative date if the board was to grant a deferral of September 14th for that meeting.
And, uh, Mr. Drago, you have seen the BPDA's, uh, a recommendation, right?
I have, Madam Chair.
Okay. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, add the date, please.
Uh, we do have a few for September 28th, so we're able to fit September 28th at 12:30.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 930 only?
520 East Broadway.
For the record, calling BOA 1084622520 East Broadway, there is a companion case BOA 1084625520 East Broadway. Name and address for the record, please.
Tom Miller, McDermott Colton Miller, 28 State Street, Boston. Uh, we are requesting a deferral because we need to, for multiple reasons, but, uh, we need to re-advertise, uh, we were cited last Thursday for, uh, something that had been in the plans for a long period of time, so, uh, this new violation needs to be re-advertised. And additionally, we want to continue the community outreach process with our others.
May I have a motion, please?
What's for it?
Um, what, board members, may I have a motion, please?
I think Mr. Kandell has made a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not hear you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the date, please.
Uh, we are out to November 9th on that one.
11, 9, uh, 12.
At 12:30.
Okay.
11, 9 to 12:30.
Okay.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 930?
We do 191 Commonwealth Avenue.
For the record, calling BOA 1100765191 Commonwealth Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Norman Orban, Marcus Regal, Emmer and Brooks, 45 Braintree Hill, Office Park in Braintree, uh, with.
I'm sorry, you, you faded out, can you please state your reason for requesting a deferral?
Yes, we, we may need to make some amendments, we're, we're doing some further research on the actual occupancy number, um, it may be accurate, it may be adjusted slightly, and we just want to get the record correct for, um, so we're just looking for either deferral or ultimately maybe a withdrawal and a new application.
Okay, so, hold on, may I have a motion for deferral?
Defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those, uh, thanks, Jean, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Motion carries.
11, sorry.
So go ahead.
You'll have a date of November 16th at 12:30.
Okay, see you then.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 930? Hearing none, I'll call the first case, calling BOA 121038916 South Russell Street. This is to legalize the ground-level dwelling unit to correct documents from a store and four dwelling units to five dwelling units. Full work to be done. The violation of Article 17, Section 1, the usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Kevin Joyce, Darty Law Offices, Boston for the petition up. Also on the call is our architect David Free of Two Associates, Quincy, Mass, and my colleague Nancy Low. The reason the board should grant our request is because a lack of open space is a characteristic of a matter of many.
So, hold on, hold on, Counselor, can you tell us? Can you tell us how this unit is being created and the size of the dwelling units in the building?
Well, the size of this unit is 511 square feet.
And is it a one-bedroom or two-bedroom?
It's a one, it's a one, it's a one-bedroom unit on the ground floor of 511 square feet. It's not being created, it exists. It's been in existence since 2000, at least 2007, when my client bought the building. It's been taxed as a five-unit apartment building by the city since at least 1985. The problem arises because the last one for one record in the Inspection Services Department dated 1937 listed the property as four apartments in one store.
Hold on, hold on. Ms., Ms. Edwards, can you zoom in, please, so we can see it a little bit more clearly? Thank you. Yes, go ahead. And it is what floor of the building that this proposed unit is on?
It's on the ground floor. There's a basement beneath it and there's four apartments above it.
If you can turn to the other page of the plans, this is not the right one. It's the one before that. You can go backwards on this.
Yeah, right, it's, yeah. Yeah, it's not on this plan, it's on the one before it.
Can Ms. Edwards turn, uh, flip to the other plan? There should be two pages.
Just hold on, everybody, Ms. Edwards doing her best. In the meantime, Mr. Candell, have you had a chance to look at the plans?
I had the drawings that I looked.
Go ahead.
I didn't see, uh, there was just no layout and I was, I was a little unsure what was happening. And now I understand, I don't know what the, there was no, no details in terms of condition, ceiling heights, very vague.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is it.
Yeah, that's what I saw.
As I look, as we look at it, it's no occupancy in the, uh, Ms. Edwards, can you go back one so we can see unit one, please? Okay, so that's a one-bed, is it a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom?
One-bedroom.
So it's, it's the middle.
Hold on, hold on, Ms. Low, let's just have Kevin on this because he is the representative here. So I see a living room bedroom, there's, uh, Mr. Joyce, two means of egress?
There's a, one means of egress in the front. The architect, David Free, could probably explain it a little bit better, Madam Chair, but there's an escape window in the rear bedroom. There's two windows in the rear, in the bedroom. One on the, I'm looking at it, one on the left, one on the right. The one on the left, you press a switch and you get on the stairs. You get on the, what do you call it?
Please put your name and address on the record. Tell us whether this is below grade in the rear, what the floor to sill height is and what the floor to ceiling height is. Okay, um.
I have the, I have the floor, I have the, the grade to the top of the sill is five feet three and a quarter inches.
I'm sorry?
Five feet three and a quarter inches.
Five feet to the bottom of the sill?
Yes, ma'am. From the ground floor to the bottom of the sill is five feet and three-quarters inches. There's a ladder that goes down. From the part of the fire escape goes a side of the window down to the ground. And the window is gonna, it's supposed to have a, um, a fire department-approved device on it so that it can open in terms of a fire, in terms of a fire.
Architect on?
He should be on, he's from Arthur Chu.
Yes, he's from Arthur Chu, correct.
His name is David Freed?
I saw him on a little earlier. Now, if he's not on, maybe I should request a deferral. And we'll wait till another day.
Is it Arthur you said? He was on earlier.
Okay, so I, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna request that people make a motion for deferral, that the board make a motion for deferral. And when you come back, is there a second?
I'll make a motion for deferral.
Thank you.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please.
Uh, we're gonna get 928. We have a few that just opened up.
And please make sure, Mr. Joyce, that at that time, we know that that unit meets all building code requirements as far as floor to ceiling height, um, floor to sill height and everything else, okay?
I will, yes.
Then BOA 12:30.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 121-0630, 20 Dwight Street. This is a ground floor elevation addition. Violation of Article 64.9.4, that townhouse throwout extension into the rear. Article 32, Section 32-4. This is the groundwater conservation overlay district. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and all members of the board. Thank you for letting me speak. I am Michelle Quintagley, the homeowner of 20 Dwight Street. I am, I applied to extend a bump out on the back of my condo condominium. It is no further than any of the extensions on either side of me. I was asked to submit a no-harm letter along with a water recharge plan, which is.
Can you please hold on? Thank you. Christine, are you on?
I am, Madam Chair. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Semenali, Boston Rowland Trust, and we have both the BWSC approval and no-harm letters.
Okay, thank you.
That's the Secretary here, we have the letters as well.
Thank you. So can you talk, please, about the rear addition? The applicant, Ms., you're logged in as Christine McMahon?
Yes, it's Michelle Quintagley is the homeowner.
Sorry, go ahead, sorry.
Christine is on, needed, not at all. Basically, it's a small bump out. It's, uh, literally gets me a little bit closer to the extensions on either side of me. It is only one, one floor and truthfully, it's just to, to get me a little bit further out into the yard because I have large extensions on both the left and right side of me.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Candell?
Grounds are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. Just want to go on record and support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ana Calderon from Counselor Flynn's office. The counselor would like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, also.
I'm sorry, the, the, okay. Okay, hold, hold on, hold on. Anybody else to speak either in support or in opposition?
Do you have a raised hand calling number three? Is that you, Minar?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. My apologies, with the carpentry, you want to go on record and support, thanks.
And I have no additional raised hands, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case. Calling BOA 118-7924, 760 East Ford Street. This is backyard asphalt pavement for five parking spaces. The violation of Article 68, Section 8, Dimensional Regulation, insufficient open space per unit, free from the motor vehicle parking maneuvering area. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Ryan Spitz, Adams and Morenci with the business address of 350 West Broadway, South Boston. So I'm here on behalf of the applicant today with a proposal to add five off-street parking spots to the rear of the property using an existing curb cut. These five spots will be allocated to the two units that are currently in existence on the property. Spaces will be eight and a half by 20 feet. The parking area will be constructed with permeable pavers to enhance and improve the drainage that's currently in place as well as adding some shrubbery for beautification of the landscaping as well.
Okay, so, um, so this is a legal two-family, is it?
Yes.
And how long has it been a two-family?
Well, the, so a little bit of history on this one. The current owner purchased this property back in 2020 during the middle of the pandemic from the Kana family who owned that property for 81 years prior to years. So it's been in existence for quite some time. I don't know how long prior to the 81 years that the Kana family owned it that it was in existence, but that's to the extent that I have to my knowledge.
Okay, um, how are the plans, Mr. Candell?
I was a five.
Any questions from the board? So, um.
Madam Chair, Mr. D'Amico has spoken on this. I just want to put it on the record.
Yeah.
We got 760 Ford Street. It may be a little tight with the parking plan, it does work from BPD perspective.
Yes, the only question I have for you, um, Mr. Spitz, Counselor Spitz, is that it looks like you've proposed screening to the rear. How about the side yard? I mean, I see one above a garage, but how about the butter at 758?
So, all right, okay, just to make sure that we're on the same page. So you, as I'm entering off of Ford Street, you're talking about the existing left-hand side of the property?
Yes.
I'm, I'm sure the applicant would be open to enhancing some sort of landscaping there. Most of the payment has already been pre-existing. So I'm sure that he'd be willing to, and open up to suggestions as well.
Okay. And so it looks like, um, the side yard is existing pavement. The rear yard is proposed pavement, proposed pavers and a small landscaped area, okay?
Correct. And, and the parking spaces there will be permeable pavers as well to just help support the actual drainage.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. Just want to go on record and support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ana Calderon from Counselor Flynn's office. The counselor would like to highlight his neighbor's concerns that the developer has not been a good neighbor which has resulted in multiple stop-work orders for work done at the property and caused disruption in the quality of life of our neighbors. However, in the final analysis, Counselor Flynn is also extremely concerned about the parking crisis that many neighbors faced in the South, in South Boston and what an additional five parkings on the street would mean to neighbors, the surrounding blocks, if they were not approved. With the difficulty in one street parking in South Boston in mind, Counselor Flynn supports the project with a provisional included counsel that has mentioned that the five spots will be attached to the units. Moreover, he requests that the developer treats his neighbors with the dignity and respect they deserve in terms of quality of life issues that they have not been afforded thus far. Thank you.
Um, Anna?
Yes.
So the, the, were the stop-work orders issued to the new owner or was it a history of with the previous owners?
Um, Madam, the chair, it is our understanding that it was to this new owner.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I comment and rebuttal to?
No, I, I just have to ask everybody that there is a reason, I'm the chair and we are in that section of the, of the conversation where I'm still taking, where we are still taking testimony. So please, I know everybody's anxious, but please, um, may, Ms., Ms. Ambassador, can you please?
I do.
Yeah. Madam Chair, Secretary here. We do have one letter of opposition.
Thank you. And may I, and may I hear from Ms. Matthews?
Yeah, sure, okay. Ms. Matthews has been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please? Oh, hello, can you hear us? Hi, Kimberly? Hi, Kim, we can't, we cannot hear you if you're talking. Uh, we cannot hear you. There is another person who'd like to raise their hand. I'm sorry, Brian, you've been unmuted as well. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, good morning. Brian Lassoff, 115 Hem Street, Boston.
Go ahead.
I am in support of the off-street parking addition. As we know, there's a significant issue with parking in South Boston and it's an existing curb cut and I think that it would benefit the area.
Thank you. And Kimberly, you're still unmuted, can you? You're having connectivity issues, I don't, can you hear us?
Um, I would just, um, let's see. She's having, um, she's, um, so I just want to read from the chat section that she's on the record in opposition.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
No additional raised, um, yeah, I have no additional raised hands, sorry, thanks.
So may I have a motion? Because I think this motion needs to accommodate some number of parking spaces but also to ensure the screening and buffering not on, not only on the rear but on the side yard. So may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with screening and buffering on the rear and side yards.
And Ms. Spinato, it's also with BPDA Design Review.
A BPDA Design Review.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second, time.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, and Mr. Hampton, if that means that there's a decrease in the number of parking spaces, so be it, okay?
Understood.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 119-0137-388-Athens Street. This erected four-story, three-unit building with four-car garage. Violation of Article 68, Section 33, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 68, Section 33, off-street loading is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 68, Section 8, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the front yard is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, side yard is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, rear yard is sufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the lot area is insufficient and Article 68, Section 8, additional lot area is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Morenci. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, I represent Charles McCarthy who is proposing to erect a four-story, three-family dwelling at 388 Athens Street in South Boston, which is within an MFR multi-family residential zoning sub-district. The project architect is Tim Johnson. Tim is also joining us today. The lot size is 1,859 square feet, which is not atypical of residential lot sizes in this neighborhood. The lot is currently vacant. The ground floor would consist of a garage with two tandem parking spaces, an entry foyer, trash and recycling room, and an elevator lobby. Three units would all be two-bedroom units of 1,078 square feet, each of them being a floor-through unit on the second, third, and fourth stories. The building height would be 40 feet, which is zoning compliant. The FAR would be 2.3, whereas the MFR district allows a maximum FAR of 2.0. Originally proposed balconies were eliminated during community process and there is no roof deck. There would be an elevator headhouse on the roof with a bulkhead and hatch for service access to the elevator override. With that, I'll pause and take any questions that members may have.
Um, and tell us about that garage door.
Uh, the garage door, as I said, there are two tandem spaces in there. It is, as proposed, a double wood garage door. Obviously, you know, Tim and I and our clients is aware of the board's preference for garage doors that are, you know, as unobtrusive as possible. This would be a garage door with, you know, with, with glazed panels. And, and I suppose that if there was any chance of reducing the size, that could occur in BPDA Design Review. But as I said, there are two tandem spaces, double wood spaces within the garage.
And let me ask about that second floor. Is that overhanging the sidewalk?
No, there, there's no overhang here of the, of the public way. There are setbacks on all sides. There are setbacks on all sides except the, the narrowest setback is on the right-hand side where it abuts a four-foot wide passageway. There's a code-compliant side back, side setback on the left side. The front is at its narrowest point where you're seeing a slight overhang, still a two-foot setback to the lot line. And in the rear, there's approximately a three-foot setback. The lot to the rear of that has a building which is approximately twenty feet off that lot's rear lot line, creating about twenty-three feet of separation distance in the rear between buildings.
Okay, how are, how are the plans, Mr. Candel?
Plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody?
Madam Chair, Mr. D'Amico has spoken on this one. I'll put it for the record regarding three eighty-eight Athens Street. Athens Street is very narrow and has no parking and also is one-way. Since this is residential use, he supports the parking design.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, would like to go and record in support. The applicant has worked very closely with the abutters and met them onsite on several occasions to work and gain their support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Counselor Flynn's office. The counselor would like to go on record in support based on feedback from neighbors and the same with lower end neighborhood association who reported no issues and that the proponent worked on a number of good pay compromises to get, to gain the support of the abutters and neighbors. It is our understanding these revised plans include that the roof deck and rear decks were removed, building height reduced to forty feet, rear setback increased at upper floors to five feet, rear windows minimized for privacy concerns, the building pathway has been shifted in the right side and left side yard increased by three and a half feet. Counselor Flynn would like to offer his support on account of the work done with the neighbors to address concerns on quality of life issues such as noise and privacy. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hand.
Okay, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, sorry, before they do that, Secretary here, we do have one letter of support, one letter of opposition.
One letter of, okay, and what's the opposition?
To the project in general.
Okay, may I have a motion, please? Ladies, I need to hear your voice.
Motion to approve.
With BPDA Design Review?
Design Review.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Jeff, Jeff, can you please do, make sure there's significant design review on this because we've seen some models that look exactly like this, for example, on A Street and other places in South East that, you know, look like they could use some improvement as they mature and as, as, as they are later, as, as, as they are in the latest stages coming before us.
Yeah, our recommendation was approval with specific attention to the garage and maneuverability of apartments, but I'll have them take a look at the entire project.
Yes, please, because, you know, the ones on A Street, which I happen to see fairly frequently, and others, you know, just have this very boxy, boxy, basic look to them. Okay? Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling DOA one two zero five five six four twenty Gillette Park. This is to use parking lots eight and nine as parking lot use item fifty-eight for ancillary parking, supporting officers' uses across A Street. Violation of Article nine, Section one, extension of non-conforming use. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Ken Fields, a four-point associate with the business address of thirty-one State Street on behalf of the Gillette Company LLC. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is, we're seeking a conditional use permit because we're in a restricted parking district. Expansion is one of time rather than physical. The site is already developed. There's no construction needed. It's been used as a parking facility for about twenty years plus. It's been used as an ancillary part for about six or seven years. There's no hazard. It's, there's a gated entrance and it's fenced in. There's no nuisance. In fact, there's artwork around it and plant screening, which is constantly being.
So, so Mr. Fields, Mr. Fields, may I get just directly to the point? And it's good to at least hear you. We cannot see you. But I guess the question is that we, as the board, have approved a lot of projects on A Street. And I, I need to get an understanding if we've approved them without parking and you are now meeting that park, helping them meet that parking need? Is that what's happened here?
Yes, there's been, there's been several parking facilities with spaces that have been completely eliminated right around the area. This is beyond the larger developments of the larger parking areas in the neighborhood. This is replacing parking lots. There's a triangular lot on West Second and Third. There was a two to fifty Athens Street parking lot and the one seventeen and one twenty-one A Street over by the Artist for Humanity. They've all been eliminated as parking. There's construction on two of them and one is a construction laid down area currently. So yes, it's replacing spaces in an area that is losing a tremendous amount of space. But those are the ones that specifically were used by the people at Channel Center and that's what these facilities are geared toward.
So I guess this is a note to the Board of Appeal because today we've seen that parking in the heart of South Boston, where we've heard about the need for parking. And then here we've approved a bunch of projects without parking when there is in fact a demand for parking. So, so just a note to board members for future reference. How are the plans, Mr. Candel?
Are you so fine, Madam Chair?
Mr. Fields, does this plan show any screening and buffering?
There is screening and buffering along A Street. There is a landscape plan that has been approved by the BPDA or the BRA in the past. Basically, there's some vines, there's some surface vegetation, and then there's artwork on the black fence. The artwork recently came down after it had been aged and currently Gillette has an RFP out seeking local artists to provide artwork to be included on the fence as part of the screening.
Okay, and so you did mention that the BPDA had approved a screening and buffering plan. Has that been implemented?
Yes, it's been implemented, but as I mentioned, you know, it was aged, actually, according to the Gillette people, the people from Art for Humanity took down the aged screening and that has prompted the current request for proposals to come up with some new screening.
Sorry, I, I think, I think we're talking about two different kinds of screenings. We're talking about plant screenings, but, okay, thank you. Is any, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, would like to go record in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Counselor Flynn's office. We sent in a letter of support on this proposal and we have heard no opposition regarding this proposal and in the past, this conversion was well received as this alleviates some of the issues relating to lack of parking spaces. So the counselor would like to support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BPDA Design Review.
Thank you. And the focus is screening and buffering and we mean plating.
Correct.
Oh, is there a second?
Second, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set with that proviso. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling a next case, calling DOA one one five two two seven four sixty-nine to seventy-one A Street. This is a change of use of levels basements one through five to research and development and uses for research laboratory and product development or prototype manufacturing as allowed under Business Group B. All infrastructure remain the same. Violation of Article seven, Section four, other protectional conditions, Article nine, Section two, non-conforming use change. Article sixty-eight, Section seven, a research lab is forbidden and Article sixty-eight, Section seven, product development or prototype manufacturing is forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Joe Hanley, McDermott, Coltean Miller, twenty-eight State Street in Boston. With me is Nate Turner from Margulies Peruzzi Architects, Kyle Dupell, and Morgan Weinstein from Phase Three Real Estate Partners. Madam Chair, this is the, this site is the former Standard Rivet Factory Building. It's located between A Street and the Hall Road on a dead-end section of Athens Street that has been a long storied industrial corridor that was changed to residential MFR two years ago. This building is a pre-existing approved commercial building and the use was approved with an expansion by this board in two thousand sixteen for a three-story addition onto this brick-and-beam building. My client, CIEE, purchased the property and lowered that expansion to a five-story retail and office building, which is forty-five thousand seven hundred square feet. So it's a boutique-sized office and retail building. The proposal is due to the pandemic as well as the unique characteristics of the property site. It is to now occupy and activate the building, which has been vacant since COVID-19. It has completed the project to its core and shell. CIEE has lost seventy percent of its employment base. We are partnering with Phase Three Residential Partners, Retail Partners, who has experience in lab and research. And so the proposal is not to expand upon the structure, but merely to change from one non-conforming commercial use with office and to add a boutique, limited level of research, R and D, and prototype manufacturing. The chair read into the record that the infrastructure is the same. I will say, one notation, and it showed on the plans, we have a mechanical enclosure on the rooftop, which I will note is wider to accommodate the change of use, but it's also no higher than the approved lowered height. And so we do not need relief for that in the restricted roof structure district. The other thing, Madam Chair, I'll just conclude with and tell you about the zoning. We're also addressing the board's input with respect to Two Harbor Street back on June twenty-ninth. Madam Chair, you would observe the need for local job creation and opportunities, especially for residents that don't have college degrees. This project will initiate the first of its kind STEM program in South Boston and partnering with South Austin Catholic Academy and the South Austin Neighborhood Health. Finally, for the zoning, Madam Chair.
Can you please mute Mr. Hanley? He, Mr. Hanley, please try not to talk over me, okay? Thank you. So what I'd like to know is, so for the record, so this use is C, A Street, so the forbidden use is a research lab, product development and product manufacturing are all forbidden uses. So what I'd like to understand is whether this is speculative or if there is a proposed tenant in place because what we're seeing, I think, all over the city, and I think including in, in our suburbs, including Cambridge and Somerville, is a lot of speculative space where there is no specific tenant in place. So can you respond, let us know if there's a specific tenant and a specific type of use?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And sorry if I interrupted you. I didn't hear you speaking. So if you look at page twelve of the proposal, we have worked pretty extensively with the elected officials in the community to tailor the use, the operations, and the design for a prospective tenant of a low level of research. Like others who have come before us, we have committed to no higher than a biosafety level of two, which in many cases is akin to a high school chemistry lab. There are also a number of operation measures which support the grant of the variance and design measures. We do not have a tenant to answer your question directly, Madam Chair, but we are working with Phase Three, who has extensive experience. And this would be a very special type of speculation, very different than the ones you've seen before. This is a very small boutique type of building that would preclude any type of major invasive research level.
Thank you. How are the plans, Candel?
Plans are adequate, Madam Chair.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, would like to go and record in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Counselor Flynn's office. The counselor would like to go on record in support. Please note following approximately twenty life sciences proposal in District Two. Counselor Flynn and Counselor Flaherty call for appearing on this issue with many proposals in proximity of the A Street corridor in South Boston one. Hearing discuss public safety and quality of life concerns in terms of noise and mechanicals as well as all of the opportunities in life sciences and STEM for our workforce and students. We acknowledge there is opposition to the project and work to try to get good pay compromises during the additional community process. We understand the proponent has made some changes without stem concerns about placement of the mechanicals. Counselor Flynn respectfully requests that the proponent continue work closely with the abutters and neighbors during the next phases of the project to address quality of life concerns and to be a good influence to the surrounding South Boston.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Sullivan, the Deputy Counsel at Law, Michael Flaherty. Article sixty-eight went through an extensive community process and as you know, the council's approach has been consistent in not supporting, supporting Article sixty-eight appearances. As said, this proponent is seeking a change of use that is consistent with development that's been occurring along the A Street corridor as well as all the opportunities in life sciences and STEM that are coming online. During the community process, the proponent has made changes in response to the abutters' concern, but wasn't able to address placing the mechanicals into the building itself. The counselor encourages the proponent to work closely with the abutters and surrounding neighbors during each phase of the project to address the quality of life concerns.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We do have letters of support. We have letters of opposition as well.
It feels like our emails were inundated with letters of opposition.
Yes, we also have a few raised hands. Matthew, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Matthew Kirk. I live at forty-five West Third Street in Boston and I'm also a board member of that building.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, was he in support or opposition? I missed that.
I'm in opposition. I actually also have a brief statement I'd like to read.
No, just read us the highlights because we have.
Okay, the highlight, sure. The highlight is essentially that this is a MFR LS area. There's very little, as near as I can tell, very little support for placing a life sciences building directly next to a residential facility. We are twenty-one feet from. That, we are twenty-one feet from this building. You know, some of us have relied on Article 68 and zoning maps in making housing choices. You know, basically, if you vote in favor of this, what you're essentially telling us is that, uh, the fact that Article 68 doesn't support having a forbidden use as a change of use, in the way that the proponent wants to do this, or that the neighborhood is very clear about not wanting to live right next to life sciences facilities, I, I would wonder what motivation we have to work on use issues on future projects.
Thank you.
Martha, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Good morning, my name is Martha Walls. I'm a resident of forty-five West Third Street, and I live in a home that directly faces sixty-nine A Street. And as a result, I could be directly and negatively affected if the proposed uses for sixty-nine A Streets change. And I'm certainly not alone in this. There are dozens of others, um, in my building who are in the exact same situation. And let me just briefly explain. As a result of the proposed lab use, there would be a substantial amount of HVAC equipment added to the roof of sixty-nine A Street. Because the roof is so small, there's very little room for the equipment, which means it would be placed right along the building's edge, closest to my building. And as Matt Kirk just identified, the buildings are separated by approximately twenty feet. To address the substantial noise that would be generated by the heavy equipment so close to our homes, a solid twelve-foot wall above sixty-nine A Street's roof line would need to be installed. And while that's the same height as what is there now, the current enclosure is on the far side of the roof from where we live. And so while my neighbors and I look at it currently, the substantial setback ensures that we get sufficient light and air, which would be cut off if the additional equipment is installed literally feet from our homes. So what, what this would mean is that those of us that face the building...
Ms. Walls, thank you so much. May I have, uh, listened to the others, but please, please, we've heard about, um, the height and the distance of the, of the systems from the residential use. We've heard about the distance from the residential use. We've heard about the fact that this is an MFR LS, and these two uses are completely forbidden in this district. I'd like any new, any, anybody else offering comment to give us new information? Or, uh, if you do not have new information, put your name and address off the record. Thank you.
James Gallagher, you've been unmuted?
Uh, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is James Gallagher. I'm an attorney at Davis Momente Augustine. Business address of One Boston Place, Boston, Mass. I represent a subset of unit owners at Port Forty-Five condominium at forty-five West Third Street. To address your, uh, question, Madam Chair, I will be brief and add only new things. There is nothing unique about this parcel from a zoning perspective that justifies the request of variances. The hardship that CIE and the proponent have put forward has been recognized repeatedly by courts as not sufficient to justify, uh, zoning relief in the form of variances. Financially, there is nothing unique. This building, as Mr. Hanley, um, represented to the board, is a, is a completed building. It is a perfectly good building that is adequate for its intended use as an office. There is no justification, especially zoning justification, to, to help meet a hardship burden for the variances.
And council, is that it?
I would also add that this is a, allowing this would be a major step back from the Article 68 planning that has been so pervasive to get it finally approved just a few years ago. This is reverting to, you know, the eighties and nineties where this was more an industrial area. This is a now residential area. The entire purpose of this Article 68 was to increase the residences, not change the use back to industrial area.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Mr. Ambassador?
Yep, Kathy, um, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, thank you, Kathy LaFerty, um, lifelong South Boston resident, six forty-seven East Seventh Street. Although I am not in immediate, um, correlation to the building, I, I have lived and worked at South Boston my entire life, and I think that, um, I'm in support of this project because their commitment to STEM programming and job creation, I believe will have a positive impact on the neighborhood, um, for generations. And so for that reason, I am in support of this project.
Thank you. Uh, Jacob, I'm sorry, Jacob, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Uh, Jacob B. Craft, West, uh, one, one seventy-four West Eighth Street.
Go ahead.
And I have a, a brief comment in support of this, uh, in support of this project. As both a community member and a, a South Beach resident, and a member of the, uh, of the biotech community, I think that this project takes a huge step forward in providing opportunities for high-level, high-skill, um, employment, um, and high compensation and high, uh, high, high-skill employment in our neighborhood. It allows for South Beach not just be a place for people to go to bars on West Eighth Street, but a real place where people can work and have careers, um, and can really provide a much needed stimulus to our neighborhood. Thank you.
May I hear from the caller, new sub, please?
Yep, minor, go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, minor, who are, who are, who are supporting the project?
Thank you. I believe those are all of them, sorry, Madam Chair.
Okay, so basically, um, in opposition, we heard about the fact this is now a residential sub-district where these research lab and prototype manufacturing uses are forbidden. It's distance from residential, residential uses, the, um, the HVAC system and the noise and potential impact, and the fact that there is nothing unique, there is no hardship, and this is also, um, speculative. On the positive side, there was talk, not about the use, but about the in, in, impact on, on STEM, uh, education and, um, and high-level jobs, which kind of, with, with high-level, high-paying jobs. So given that information, and we are, um, driven by the zoning, um, may I have...
Madam Chair, may, may I ask if I could point something out quickly on the zoning? Just clarify.
No, thank you. May I have a motion, please? I know this is a hard one, but we have to remember clearly that the building was approved for office. However, the zoning has changed, and this is a forbidden use in a residential sub-district. So, given that fact, may I have a motion, please? Okay, there's a dead silence. Come on, people. I need somebody to be brave and make a motion.
Madam Chair, would it be beneficial to defer this to, to, uh...
No, for me, for me, this is fairly clear that, um, this is driven by the zoning code, which now puts this zone in a, in a multifamily residential, local convenience sub-district. This is a forbidden use. So I think every one of us who lives in a residential district has to think about, what would you do? What would you say if a research lab and a manufacturing lab popped up a budding to you? You know, so, um, I think that's the, that, that is the bottom-line question that everybody needs to answer.
Madam Chair, motion to deny it?
To deny, is there a second? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I too am.
I'm sorry, that was without prejudice, correct?
No, it's, it's just straight denial.
That's not what I heard. Could I clarify?
Um, Mr. Kandell, was it a motion for denial, straight denial, or denial without prejudice?
Straight denial.
Straight denial. So that is what the second, that was what everybody supported. So this project has been denied.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 118-5335-168H3. This is a change of occupancy from a dance studio and two residential units to a general office and two residential units. The violation is Article 9, Section 2, non-conforming use change, and Article 68, Section 7, use is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz, Adams &amp; Marancy, with the business address of three fifty West Broadway, South Boston. I'm here today on behalf of the applicant to propose a change of occupancy from a dance studio and two residential units to a general office and two residential units. Uh, this was a previous project that was approved a few years back, with the units that have already been constructed, and there are tenants residing in the two above units. The, the general office will include three small offices alongside of H Street and a little nook area for a coffee stand slash, um, water stand slash, um, refrigerator, just, just for, uh, as, as clients come in, um, as, as people enter the property, just to have some refreshments available there.
So, Mr. Spitz, let me just ask you. I, um, was looking at the, um, the zoning district is in an MFR, and the, um, dance studio has a different impact than a general office. So can you tell us what the rationale is for this general office?
Well, uh, the rationale for the general office is going to be used just as a professional office for, 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 for two, two guys to actually be able to just to come in and conduct some work using a computer. Previously held in a butters meeting, which the neighbors who did show up, were, were in support of this project. Nobody voiced any sort of opposition. They actually, uh, anticipated that there would be less traffic consumption because the dance studio was bringing a ton of traffic, double parking to the actual neighborhood. This will be a little bit, um, less in, uh, of an impact to the community as the office would only be in existence probably from a nine to four or nine to five-ish.
And it's meant to be, um, Monday through Friday, nine to five?
Yes, pretty much. I mean, there may, there may be some nights that some work has to be conducted, but it wouldn't be ongoing, people coming in and out of the office space.
Because I think we've, we as a board have been, um, burned a couple of times because, um, sometimes things come in for a general office, and, um, then they go into swing space because they've been approved for general office, which then has a different kind of impact on the neighborhood. You know, so we need to understand that this is in fact for regular, regular use as, um, as an office space.
Yes, it will be. It'll, it'll actually be a professional office space.
Okay. Um, Mr. Kandell, how are the plans?
Things are adequate, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
I'm Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, like to go record in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. The chair members of the board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support based on feedback from neighbors and the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, given that information, um, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, Jean?
So it's a motion to approve a professional office? Is there, and there's a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 120-89696 Douglas Street. This is demo the existing freestanding garage and build a floor family residential apartment building with parking. The violation is Article twenty-nine, Section four, this is in the G pod. Article sixty-eight, Section thirty-three, off-street parking look and is insufficient. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, the foyer ratio is excessive. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, the front yard is insufficient. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, rear yard is insufficient. And Article sixty-eight, Section eight, the additional lot area is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, good morning, Ms. Secretary, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Joe Hanley, twenty-eighth State Street in Boston, here on behalf of, uh, the owner, Mike Norton, who is with us. Also with me is Nick Landry, who's the project architect. Um, this is a case that was before the board on August eleventh, um, two thousand twenty, last year. Uh, we received input from the BPDA and the community, and now we've addressed that. Um, the site is, uh, an existing garage building in the multifamily residential. So it's a non-conforming structure and use that we're seeking a change to, um, a residential use. We have made a series of, uh, changes. I will say, this, this location also is, um, just across from Carson Beach and in close proximity to, um, Mocley Park. The bedrooms, Madam Chair, and the unit counts are appropriate for family-sized housing as well. There are four units being proposed in the new structure. Two are one-bedroom plus's, which are over nine hundred and twenty square feet, and the other two are three-bedroom, uh, four-bath units that are over eighteen hundred square feet. We have reduced the parking, um, to six spaces, which is in direct response to the BPDA's recommendation back in August. We also, um, minimized the curb cut, which Mr. Ehrlich commented on in the BPDA, to now just have one curb cut. And we made the building smaller so that it now complies with the side yard requirements of the zoning code. It is under the height, and it exceeds, uh, the open space requirements. The relief that is necessary is, um, for the floor area ratio. What is required is two. What is proposed is two-point-one-five. And the front yard, uh, requirement of five, and we are at three, almost three and a half. Uh, and the rear yard, uh, which is twenty, the existing building is at the lot line. We're building, bringing the new building three feet off the rear. And we also modified, uh, the rear decks to bring them inside as terraces. Each unit, in addition to their ample size, will have their own, um, private terrace space. And that concludes our presentation, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Is there going to be a roof deck on this?
No, no, ma'am.
Okay, and, um, so, yes, thank you, Ms. Edwards. I was going to ask about the parking lot. Is this an elevator building?
I do not believe with four units, Nick, do we have an elevator?
No, there is no elevator.
And are you, are you required to put in a handicapped unit?
No.
No, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Kandell?
Plans are fine, Madam Chair.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to, I'm sorry, with any questions? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
I'm Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, like to go record in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. The chair members of the board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support based on feedback from neighbors and the Gate of Heaven, and the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
I do have a few raised hands on.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We do have a couple of letters of, uh, opposition, a couple of letters of support.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll start with William Hare. You've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, uh, William Hare, four sixty-one East Eighth Street, Director Butter to six Douglas. Stand in opposition to this project. I think if anybody walked down Douglas Street, they would see that the scope of this project, you know, dwarfs anything around, uh, this particular, uh, project. We're on the highest level, uh, the highest grade of this street, and this project will tower over our three-story unit. And that's the same for any of the other structures around, uh, this area. As you guys saw in the last proposal, uh, in twenty-twenty, minor changes have been made as it relates to the overall scope with nearly seventeen feet of setback, uh, violated in the rear. Uh, so just given the overall size and scope, and if you were to walk down this street, I think you would see that this is nothing like anything else on, on Douglas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, all right, and go ahead with Eric. You've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, hi, my name's Eric Parker. I live at eight Douglas Street, um, Director Butter. This, the...
This building is absolutely enormous, and I just want to note that the appropriate Neighborhood Association that this should have gone through would be the Door Tester Higgs Association. To my knowledge, it hasn't been presented there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brian, you've been unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Um, yes, my name is Brian Slevin, I am in 8 Douglas as well, Unit 1 and Director Butter. I, I just think from a parking perspective, I understand that we removed the second curb cut here, which, which is beneficial to, you know, to us on the street, I would like to say that, but however, still is not ample amount of parking, off-street parking for the units that are, that they're planning on putting in. And so my biggest concerns rely on, you know, a, a street that already has difficulty with parking and that becoming even more of an issue.
So let me just ask you, is Mr. Hare, yourself and Mr. Parker all residents of 8 Douglas?
Um, no. Eric and myself are, Eric and myself are 8 Douglas, Willie's the building, the Director Butter on the other side.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, Rebecca, you've been unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Thank you, yes, Rebecca Hofsettler, 459 East 8th and the Director Butter to 6 Douglas. We as well oppose the project inconsistent in size and scale with the rest of the street. This would be the only four-family rental on the street that is two to three family homes. And while technically a height variance may not be required at 40 feet, nothing else on the street is that high. Our home is actually higher in grade on the hill and the height of this would tower even over ours. Overall size, scale is our primary concern and the reason we oppose the current development. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and lastly, Tom, you've been unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Thomas Salt and Stoll, 449 East 8th Street, Unit 1. And I speak in opposition to this project, I've also submitted written comments in opposition. I'm particularly concerned with, as others, with the density of this project. With four units, 10 bedrooms potentially adding significantly to our, a critical parking problem now. And the attorney for the petitioner just glossed over the issue of the variance requested for the rear lot line. I think that's a public safety issue. As recently as a year ago May, four wooden row houses were gutted by fire less than a block from 6 Douglas Street. And...
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for your attention.
Yes, thank you. So we noted your opposition, Ms. Ambassador, anybody else on the deck?
We have everyone, thank you.
Okay. Counselor, I think I, so you said that the rear yard, the requirement was 20 and you're providing, but I, I'm not sure I heard how many feet.
Yeah, yes, ma'am. So the, if you look at the site plan, the existing nonconforming building is built to the lot line, and what we're proposing is to raise that, obviously, and then we're coming three feet off the property line. We do not have window openings with respect to the fire concerns. And then there is a, in the, the second page of the presentation, it shows you the changes that were made. I will say on parking, that was something that this board asked us specifically to address back in August as well as the BPDAs, but now recommends approval. And I, I misspoke, we had eight parking spaces, I'm sorry, six parking spaces before, and we have four parking spaces now. And as, as one of our butters noted, we're under the height and we now are, don't need a variance for the side yard, which is next to 8 Douglas. And there is a land court case for their encroachment on our property at both 8 Douglas Street.
Okay, so, okay, so, and can you talk, I think the part that, that struck was that how is this contextual with the two to three families on the street? I know the zone is MFR.
Right, yeah, so, and you know, as you pointed out, MFR, you know, isn't allowed use. If you look at the FAR, which is required is two, we're 2.15. So it's really the minimum relief necessary to, to say that it's out of scale would be, you know, incorrect. And again, you know, it's an improvement for the existing condition at the rear, but we're also able now to comply both with the side yards. And so if you put this in context, there are multifamily residential buildings throughout the district, that's why it's an MFR district. And so we think, you know, we're at an appropriate level that is minimal in nature.
Thank you, Counselor. Given all that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve a BPDAs design review.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, 11:03, I'm going to call the 11 o'clock cases for deferrals and withdrawals. This is for 11 o'clock only, are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 11 o'clock address, please? Okay. We'll call the next case, 9:30, calling BOA 107-2023, 190 to 192 Dudley Street. This is demolish an existing one-story retail building, combine the two lots and erect a new five-story residential building with 28 apartments on floors two to five and build a new retail store on the first floor. The violation is Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 50, Section 11, the floor to air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 11, the height requirement is excessive. And Article 50, Section 43, off-street loading is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Attorney Patrick Behony with the business address of 160 Federal Street.
But, excuse me, I need to recuse myself.
Is that Jean?
Yes.
Okay, for the record, Ms. Panato is recusing herself. That means as a five-member board, for approval, you need support from all members. You may request that if you so desire, an administrative deferral.
I think, I think we'll proceed. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Go ahead.
What we have proposed on the site is, which is owned by Green Enterprises, our client, and I'm on, logged in today with Alpita Parisa Polo, the architect from Perezco Associates. As the, as the, as the secretary mentioned, we are combining two lots. Lots are combined by way of existing building. The current owner is the developer here, Green Enterprise. They currently own and operate Central Convenience on the first floor. And the intention with this approval and the Article 80 process preceding it is to raise the existing building and erect a new building to accommodate a larger retail space on the first floor with some retail storage in the basement level, and then have 28 rental apartments on floors two through five. The zoning in the zoning in this sub-district is a...
Oh, go ahead, sorry, go ahead.
Roxbury, it's, it's a Roxbury Economic Development Area, Dudley Square Economic Development Area specifically. The height requirement through the process has been, the height relief, rather, has been removed. The existing height for this area is 55 feet, and the proposed, proposal before the board today is 53 feet, complying with our height restriction. We are seeking relief for floor area ratio. The floor area ratio in this sub-district is 2.0, and the proposal as advanced is 3.5. With the combination of the two parcels, again, does create a 8,700 approximate square foot lot. Side yard does comply, front yard does comply. We are seeking relief for rear yard by a little over two and a half feet. The requirement is a 20-foot rear yard, and we have a 17.4-foot rear yard. And both uses are allowed for the continued use of the retail, which again would be raised and then rebuilt, as well as the multifamily residential above it.
Tell us about the parking.
The, with the parking requirements for, for the 28 residential units is 26 parking spaces due to the four affordable. We have none provided, and through the community process, that was something that was initially proposed and then eliminated. The community, the proponents for the project preferred the larger retail use as opposed to some of the reduced parking to accommodate the units. We do have an increased bike storage in, in the apartments. Leases will include a T, T pass, which is accessible through Dudley Square.
Okay, so tell us about the unit sizes.
Certainly. It is approximately 17 one-bedroom units that range in size from 625 square feet to 784 square feet, and 11 two-bedroom units, 850 to 868 square feet, all with one bathroom.
So there are no family units?
There are one-bedrooms and two-bedroom units only, Madam Chair. There are four affordable units, initially three were required, but we rounded up to four.
And so there's no parking, are there any roof decks?
There is no roof decks or amenity space on the roof at all.
Okay. So this is an EDA, this is right by Ibonian Hall, is it?
It abuts it to the right. The building is set back to accentuate Iberian Hall, and the height was reduced to go just below the cornice line of Iberian Hall.
Okay, okay.
There, we submitted approximately 53 signatures in support, there was over 60 comments in support, and I think some letters from local...
The question I have is that I was at another community meeting, and there was a presentation or representation that the need in the community is for three bedrooms and family-sized units. And so this was by, by the BPDAs, actually. So I'm a little surprised that these, these come through as, you know, for very small families versus, versus families, you know? So I, I just put that out there. How are the plans, Mr. Kandell?
So, I'm going to recuse myself. They're only adequate.
Okay, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support or opposition of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Jason Gant from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I'd like to go on record in support of this proposal. A community meeting was held on May 4th, 2021, in which they addressed concerns that a butter is held, and I've been very, very good with making sure that they reach back out to the butters and any concerns that are brought up, they do make sure that they reach out for them.
Okay, anybody else?
Do have a raised hand, I'll see if anyone else from the...
Madam Chair, secretary here, we do have a couple of letters of support and opposition. We also have a signature page of 40, 42 people in support.
I do have one raised hand, Brian, are you here to give testimony for this project?
I thought he was the South Boston...
That's what I thought too, yeah, I was just making sure, thank you. Um, to, to Kathleen, one second, Kathleen is sending a message in the chat. Kathleen. Okay, Kathleen, you've been unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Kathleen McPherson, 55 boat nav. You skipped us earlier, we were supposed to be at 11, because you said no one was here, but we couldn't unmute to tell you that we're here.
What's, where was, did we skip a project or...
Now, hold on, if you're here for 11, we'll, we'll call for deferrals later, okay? Can you put in the, in the chat with Ms. Ambassador what, what project you're requesting a deferral for?
Sure, I can do that.
So let's go back to testimony for 190 to 192 Dudley Street.
Madam Chair, I have no additional raised, oh, no, no additional raised hands, thank you.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
A motion to approve a BPDAs design review.
Is there a second?
Second, Chair.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And for the record, I will put my opposition in, so it's been denied.
Oh.
Sorry, guys. I have that...
Is it denied without prejudice?
Um, we could, ah, yes, I, I will, no, actually, but the process that we follow, if a motion doesn't carry, and this case we had five, it's automatically denied, but a denial means you can come back to this address, but with a different project. So let's make it clear that that's what, what, what the denial means. It just means a different project, but you can't come in on this address. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Madam Chair.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 121-3945-79 Kenwood Street. This is a curb cut, install a new driveway for three parking spaces in the back. The violation is Article 65, Section 41, off-street parking requirement, the location of the driveway shared with the neighbors' lot is insufficient maneuvering. The violation is Article 65, Section 9, the usual open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Karen Davis, Karen Davis.
So tell us what you're proposing.
So basically, what we're trying to do is have up to three cars parked in the rear of the vehicle, of the home, with, and I use a sustainable material, p-gravel, and that would benefit the drainage on the properties.
Okay, so, hold on, tell us how many family, is this a one or a two or a three family?
It's a two-family, grandfathered in, three-family, accessible.
I'm sorry, so it's a three-family?
Oh, it's, it's probably listed as a two-family.
It's listed as a, it's two.
And is that, okay, so it's a, it's a two-family dwelling. Tell us about the distance from your building to the, your property line?
The building to, what is it, what is the, it's supposed to be seven feet.
So basically, the passage to the rear of the driveway, it's a second feet pathway on our property, and it'll be leading into the rear driveway.
And are you proposed to share this with your butter?
It's not the shared, it's not shared, no, it would be a separation, it would have a separation, you would see if...
Okay, so you're anticipating accommodating that driveway on your property completely?
It's going to more be the parkway, because we will not be parking there, the parking will be to the rear of the car.
Madam Chair?
Of the house, I apologize.
Madam Chair, Mr. D'Amico has spoke on this, would you like to have his testimony?
Yes, yes, because I'm, I'm, I'm...
Yeah, I, I think it would help a little bit. So regarding 79 Kenwood, the driveway is only seven feet wide and there lacks the required area for safe and adequate maneuverability, he does request denial.
And what's required for, for adequate safety, they are proposing seven, what's required?
Good question.
Okay, so it's below the required, okay.
Actually, the, the proposed parking space, the requirement is correct towards the back because there will not be parking at the side, so there will not be any parking whatsoever at the side, it will be directly to the back, and the requirement is...
But I think, I think our concern is that the distance, the seven feet, is inadequate, especially since you have that bump out and the change, it looks like you have a change in slope, that it just might be a difficult thing to accommodate. And so that is why we rely on the expertise of the Transportation Department on our proposals. Okay?
And there was actually, there are the purple poles, those will be removed, and we did, we also do have signatures of the neighborhoods to support.
And we are looking at it, it doesn't matter, we're looking at it on a technical basis, you know, so, so that is why we rely on the Transportation Department is, is purely and completely technical. Okay, so if we, we just don't want to have an issue, or you, more importantly, to have an issue if this is too small and there are some things that pop up. So for procedure-wise, we're just going to go ahead and listen to anybody who's in support or in opposition. So please, if you are here to speak on this, put your name and address on the record and tell us about, you know, since you are on the... put your name and address on the record and tell us about, um, you know, since you are on the call, uh, tell us about your, your opinion on this.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Denise De Santos from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record and support the applicant. They've worked directly with the abutters for some times and the association, which also supports their proposal outside of the technicalities that you guys are mentioning.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Denise.
Chair, I have no additional raised hands. I'm sorry, there's a Cornell Patterson.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have one letter, um, obviously in support, the carbon to the neighborhood.
Yeah, that makes it difficult, Mr. Patterson.
Yep, go ahead, you've been unmuted, Mr. Patterson?
Hi, good, good morning. Um, I was just concerned, I found this letter last night, late last night, I, with the violation, I was just, and I spoke with, um, the, this Davis this morning about the term shared driveway as opposed to a button. I, I was just concerned, concerned with that language.
And what is your address, Mr. Patterson?
Oh, seventy-five Kenwood, my driveway would be the one right next door.
Okay, so you guys haven't agreed to do a shared driveway because, um, that might actually be to both your benefits, because I noticed that your, your, um, your vehicle is up, uh, on your grassy area there to the photos, but it's not something you guys talked about. Okay, given the information that we have for us and the, uh, technical opinion from the B T D, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'm gonna make a motion for denial, the secretary.
Is there a second?
Second, Madam.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Motion carries. Um, Mrs. Secretary, should we give, uh, one more shot at the eleven o'clock?
Shot, um, was that the deferral or are they looking to?
I have plenty.
Kathleen, mute her, um, Kathleen?
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah, go ahead, are you looking for a deferral?
Um, we have an appeal for, um.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think you misunderstood, I'm not, I'm not into eleven o'clock yet, this is for only deferrals and withdrawals for eleven o'clock.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm gonna call the next case, um, B O A one, one-two-one-two-nine-zero-three, one-fourteen Rear Wallworth Street. This is a two-story, three-car garage with recreation room on the second level. The violation is Article sixty-seven, section twenty-eight, design review. Article sixty-seven, section nine, the front yard is insufficient. Article sixty-seven, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. And Article sixty-seven, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small, I have a business address at fifty-one Dobson Road. Today, we are here seeking to erect a detached three-car garage with a, um, a rec room, um, directly above. Zoning sub-district is a two F five thousand, and our lot size is eight thousand, six hundred and ninety square feet. Current building on the lot is a two-family dwelling, and our violations are as follows. Rear yard setback requirement is forty, we have approximately five feet. Side yard setback is ten, required is ten, we have three feet. The front yard is twenty feet requirement, and we have five for seven. Again, it's just a, a direction of a, a three-car garage.
Um, as you know, as, as you see me peering at the drawing, I think, um, the three-car garage got it. The question is that rec room, what is size of the rec room? Because it looks like it has, is that a linen closet in the back? Uh, it has a bathroom and it has mechanical H VAC system. And you know how concerned we are, and it looks like it's a bathroom with a bathtub in that? Um, and you know how concerned we are about inadvertent expansion of space into dwelling units?
I, I do, Madam Chair, and to answer the first question, the, um, area of the top floor or the, that area is approximately seven hundred square feet. It, the, the rec room is basically gonna be a home office, um, and if the board so desires, we can, uh, remove the bathroom from the yard as well. It's not a problem. Because there is no intent to make it into living space.
And is it, and it will be a home office for which unit? Because you said this was a two-family?
Yes, the owner resides on the second and third levels of the current building that's on the site.
So it's, it's essentially the equivalent of an accessory home office?
Correct.
Okay.
Finger out.
Okay. Yes, because it's very, very handsome, but it does look like it has the potential for, for morphing into a separate unit, um.
Understood, Madam Chair, and again, we'd be willing to remove the bathroom, that's.
Okay, um, how are the plans, Mr. Candel?
Things are adequate, Madam Chair, you, uh, you're on topic.
Thank you, is, and any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Uja, and I'm here at Neighborhood Services, and we would like to support this proposal.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have opposition letters.
Madam Chair, we have one raised hand, Emma, you've been unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Um, Emily Ratliff, sixty-five Aberton Street, I'm an abutter, I oppose this project, um, our testimony, my testimony has been sent in to the board, thank you.
Can you summarize what your opposition is based on?
Um, sure, the existing property, as it stands, has about, I would say thirteen cars that are not functioning, that sit in the rear of the property. Um, in order for this to be built, those cars would have to be removed and go somewhere, I assume. Um, at this point, there is no plan to remove those cars, um, they will just stay in the area. We discussed this in our last meeting, um, and the property owner stated that he was not allowed to build. He would just put the private cars on the street, which is his right if, um, they are in fact insured and registered. Um, so my opposition is that there is no existing plan for the light that currently exists on the property before building this pro, before building this, um, building.
Okay, Madam Chair, I have no additional raised hands.
Madam, Madam Chair, may I respond to that?
Please.
Yeah, so my client is a, um, Boston firefighter and he collects cars. And so currently there are approximately, I would say about eight to nine cars on the site that he's collecting. Most of our, some of them are antique, some of, one of them, I think it's a former, uh, fire car, fire department car. And so intends to move some of the cars off of the site, um, and continue, um, you know, collecting his cars and keeping some at the site as well, but many of the cars would be removed.
Okay, sounds like he has issues about being a good neighbor. Um, so you might want to coach him on what he needs to do. Um, because, um, storage of vehicles is a separate use, if it's just storage. Because I know, um, I know there's a, a group of people here in Rosendale who do collect cars and they have, they show them off at the parade, but there's gotta be a plan B for locating of those, of those, um, those vehicles. Um, so, um, anyway, given that information, I think we've gotten everybody, um, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with a removal of the bathroom and B P D A design review?
Is there a second?
Second motion, Secretary.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, so Mr. Mister, Mr. Small, please make sure that, um, um, we have, uh, that, that your client clearly understands that, um, that we are very concerned about that unit, that space becoming a dwelling unit. Um, and, um, and, and the fact that he needs to think about how he can, can become a better neighbor.
I sure will, Madam Chair, thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board, have a good day.
Calling the last case at nine-thirty, calling B O A one-one-six-zero-four-two-nine, eight-eighty-four to eight-eighty-eight Morton Street. This is a change of offer from a salon to retail cannabis. Violation is Article sixty, section eleven, retail cannabis is a conditional use, name and address for the record, please.
Uh, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board, my name is Anthony Perkins, uh, from eight-eighty-eight Morton Street. We are here, uh, requesting condition use change from, uh, retail salon to retail cannabis location.
So, Mr. Perkins, um, I, did you get approved for a, a cannabis facility elsewhere in the city?
No, nowhere else. We do have our, no, we have our H C A for this location.
Okay, so what, what we just need to know is, and this is what we ask of every applicant, is the square footage of the proposal, the hours of operation, and how, how the, the operation functions.
Uh, the square footage of the location is, uh, just under twenty-three hundred square feet. Uh, the hours of operation are from ten A M. to eight P M. Monday through Saturday. And on Sunday, it's from ten A M. to four P M. on Sunday. And the way the, the business is wanting to operate is the patrons will enter in through the, the front entrance uh, into, uh, vestibule, where they will, their I D. and their information will be checked and scanned into the system before they're allowed into the main retail floor, where they will go and they will purchase their, their products and then they will exit out through a separate entrance.
And the separate entrance is further down, okay? Um, and then tell us about your security plan?
Yes, so we will have, uh, numerous security, um, officers uh, in, inside as well as on the outside, as well as in the parking area to constantly sort of maintain, one, the, the parking area is, is operating efficiently. And then as well as making sure that the clients are coming in our appropriate age, uh, when they scan their I D. and identification and that the flow of customers is, is working well.
Okay, uh, let me just see this, anything else? What is the volume of people you anticipate serving? And how many, um, how much online traffic do you expect to have? And will you have the ability to provide online, um, pickup?
Um, through recent, um, I guess, experience of other shops that have already opened, we're not actually expecting a high volume of customers, given the fact that there's going to be numerous locations uh, throughout Massachusetts now, uh, but we, we think that we should be able to easily, uh, maintain anywhere between uh, ten to twenty customers that will show up on-site at the same time because we'll have enough space on our floor if we need to have any potential queues on the inside as well as, uh, the amount of parking that we would have to, uh, to meet these, these, uh, customers. And we will have the, the ability to take orders online and as well as just do, uh, simple pickups.
Okay, um, and tell us about the parking, Ms. Edmond, can you show us the parking plan, please?
Look, the, I don't know if you guys have the other information.
Okay.
The, the parking is off towards the, if you're, you're looking at this, it's off to the right of this building and then there's, uh, space for fifteen to twenty, uh, cars.
And, um, fifteen to twenty vehicles, uh, let me just ask you, how many staff are you anticipating? And where do you anticipate they will park?
Yes, so we have, we're anticipating anywhere between, uh, ten to twelve, uh, staff. And then they will have parking within the, the main parking lot, where you'll have the ten, I'm sorry, fifteen to twenty cars, as well as we're very close in proximity to the N B T A, as well as we're trying to make sure that we're going to hire from within the area. So hopefully a lot of our potential staff will be able to walk or bike to the facility.
Okay, so, um, so I'm trying to understand your plans, so if I enter the store, where is my I D. checked?
Oh, in this, so this.
Door, yeah?
It, it looks as if you're, you're looking at, um, an older land, I don't know if you guys have the updated plan in there, but there's a vestibule, as soon as you come in that first door, there's actually a wall right where there's like, it looks like a shelf, um, in the middle, but that is removed and there's a wall that comes straight down and that creates a vestibule right in that front door in the corner. So you'd come into there and that, that's the location where the identification is being checked before you enter into the actual retail floor, which is a little bit off to the left.
Okay, and where, what looks like pouches, is that going to be the waiting area?
Yeah, so there will be, um, an area right there where people will be able to sit and wait if, if they can't stand. But we also have, um, like the queue line right there in that front section where there's like, there's gonna be ropes that's gonna separate people in that front part right there before they reach to the, the retail gas registers, over where you see where it says P O S. area.
And tell us how, um, deliveries will work to, of, 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 of product to your store?
So deliveries will be received in the back location, so when they come into the, the parking lot, they'll be received in through the back door into the, our receiving area, where they will go directly into a, a storage area until it's all sorted out, until it's put into inventory. And we will be scheduling these drop-offs at appropriate times with, um, majority of our suppliers or where we're getting it from, so that it would not interfere with business operation.
I don't know why I feel like I've seen your proposal before. So, that's good, okay. Um, so how are the plans, Mr. Candel?
Uh, you go first, Madam Chair.
Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, hello, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dante Peoples here from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Um, the Mayor's also like, would like to go on record and support this proposal. Um, the applicant has gone to an extent to the community process where, um, there was a community meeting held on March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one on via WebEx event, which was attended by resident community stakeholders and representatives of local elected offices. Um, the applicant has also received a number of letters of support and received many names for it. Um, the applicant was also approved on June ninth by the Boston Cannabis Board, where the Mayor's also did support. Um, I was, um, informed that there would be, there may be some, uh, community opposition, um, this morning. Um, but, uh, again, with that, while we understand that there is both support and opposition on, uh, on the full-on record, um, the Mayor's also like to, again, go on record and support and act that the applicant can continue to, um, work with the community and continue to outreach they have, um, been doing through the process, and thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have about nine pages, uh, of signatures in support and a few letters of, um, support as well.
Okay, and Madam Chair, Barbara, your hand was raised earlier, but it's down, are you looking to give testimony on this?
Yes, I would, uh.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Barbara Pritchard, I live at one-forty West Southern Street. And I'm a twenty-one-year member of the West Southern Street and Vicinity Neighborhood Association and a member of the Greater Matapan Neighborhood Council. Um, I'm seeing some changes in their part, their, um, their project right now, which were not presented before. And when they did do their presentation, it was haphazard. I feel that, um, they should, uh, attend or create another community meeting so that everybody that needs to hear it can hear it. And, um, I'd just like to say that there are, um, projects that are gonna be surrounding that, uh, that business like at eight-seventy-two Morton Street, there's gonna be a housing, uh, development put there, um. And then we have the Serenity Garden for, in honor of Stephen Odom. Um, I just think that they need to come. I just think that they need to come back and hear these issues that we have and present what they have to a better organized meeting.
So ma'am, did, did the presentation today talk you through the issues that you, you might have with it? Or the questions that you might have?
Yeah, it's, it's not, it, it says they're replacing a salon. They're also replacing a restaurant that we supported. Their parking is insufficient. The reclaiming our community, the Rock Association, is also going through a slow streets program to change the direction of Evans Street. So Evans Street will come out onto Morton Street. It will not be able to pull into their parking lot from Morton Street. They're going to wind up going, their customers will wind up going actually through the neighborhood to get to their parking lot. I just feel that there's some changes and they need to hear what the plans are for, that these neighborhood associations have presented to the city of Boston before COVID.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak on this proposal?
Madam Chair, secretary here, I'm talking to Counsel Tom. He basically said the only plans that we have are the ones that were shown. So we do not, we do not have the updated plans.
No, I, yes, I, I figure that we could hold signature until we get the plans because they should in fact have been approved by Cannabis Control so that there are enough, you know, that, that show enough checks before you enter the sales area, ID check areas.
Yeah, I was going to make a recommendation if it was going to move forward, to hold signature.
Excellent. Anybody else to speak on this proposal?
Corey, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Good morning, Corey, I'm at 65 Greenfield Road, Madam Dan, here to speak in support of this project. I, I again say hello to my good friend Barbara Pritchler. I know that there are some concerns. And in the last public meeting, I also suggested, although I am in support of this project, that they continue the dialogue with the direct neighbors so that issues that I think are resolvable can be resolved and this business can go forward and open it up. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, I have no additional raise.
Okay, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to approve, but to hold signature till we get the updated set of plans.
So, Mr. Fortune, would you mind design review? Because it looks like the frontage could be upgraded and as is usual, to this applicant only?
Yes, I'll add that design review into this applicant only.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Just a reminder, Mr. Perkins, just make sure that you continue your dialogue with the community because we encourage people to be good neighbors. I'm going to call for a 15-minute break, and we will resume at noon time. So the meeting is adjourned until noon.